This meeting to order Tuesday, February 8th at 6:00. If folks could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll start with public comment. Is there any public comment? Okay, moving on. I'm going to adjust the agenda a little bit, and we are going to go to item 6.1, the Mental Health Team and Overview.
Just pulling up our presentation. Okay. Good evening. We are really honored to be here tonight to talk to you about our services that promote student learning and school safety. We'll begin by introducing our Mental Health Team, and we'll start with Center School.
Hi, I'm Samantha Connell. I'm the School Counselor at Center School.
I'm Michaela Kylie. I'm the School Psychologist at Center School.
Good evening, everyone. Emily Whitney, School Counselor at Marston.
Hi, I'm Stacy Picard, School Psychologist in Marston.
Hello, Angela Bowen, Hampton Academy School Counselor.
Hello, I'm Amanda Tamborelli, School Counselor, Hampton Academy.
Hi, Emily Fixler, District Social Worker. And the other members on our team are Dr. Les Masterman, who's a psychologist, Dr. Costa, Superintendent, Dr. Sylvan Napton, our Director of Student Services, and Susan Antico, our District Consultant.
So what is SEL? SEL, or Social and Emotional Learning, is an approach to learning that focuses on the well-being and success of the student. This approach emphasizes emotional skills and social skills in addition to academic skills as important components of student success. You cannot learn if your brain is stressed. On our next slide, we'll talk about why this is true and how the brain works.
I know the writing is a little bit small on that. So in order to understand why SEL is important, we really need to understand how the brain communicates information. So when we talk about emotions and learning, we want to think about three layers in the brain. So the lower layer, as you can see from the picture, is where our fight-or-flight system is. So that's our alarm system in our brain. The midbrain area is where we process our emotions and our emotional memory. And the top part of the brain is where we have our higher-order thinking skills, our executive functioning, and problem-solving. So the way our brain works is its full job is to keep us alive. So it processes information bottom-up, which means everything is filtered through that fight-or-flight system first, then your emotions and your higher-order thinking. So the brain only has so much energy, just like our bodies do. So when we are in a situation where our fight-or-flight system, our alarm, is going off, the other layers of our brain are not processing information. So think about a time that you are startled and you feel your fingers tingle. That's your fight-or-flight system going off and actually pumping blood to your limbs. So it takes a lot of energy. This can be for perceived or real threats, which is why sometimes if you're late for a meeting that's really important, or you're talking in front of the school board and being videotaped, it's harder to think clearly because your brain's perceiving it as a threat. This can also be for real threats as well. So when that occurs, our energy stays in that lower level of the brain, and we're not processing other information and communicating through the next two layers. Midbrain with those emotions, think about a time you've been sad, or lonely, or depressed. It's really hard during those times to think clearly. So only when our two lower layers of our brain are calm can we meet that optimal learning ability. Does that make sense? Okay. So the purpose of SEL is to help teach students how to use tools and strategies to be able to calm those two layers of the brain so they can access that learning. You can feel this happening in your own brain if you think about it. So consider a time you're driving to work, you've got a big meeting, your kids are in the car, you're running late, and you're supposed to be prepping for the meeting, but you're running late. And so it's harder for you to really think about, how am I going to prepare for this meeting? Because your two lower layers of that brain, that's where all that energy is. It's processing those concerns. Does that make sense? Good. So the goal of SEL is to help kids calm those two layers so we can get their best learning possible.
So SEL has always been an essential component of a student's school day. But we also know that the impacts of COVID-19 have negatively affected students socially, emotionally, behaviorally. And the need for other health professionals, like school counselors, school psychologists, and school social workers, is critical for promoting student well-being and success. SEL increases awareness of responsible decision-making, problem-solving, building positive relationships, and managing stress. It also promotes children's self-management and self-awareness and self-regulation skills. This visual, you know, it's a little bit hard to read, but it sort of looks at some statistics of mental health in New Hampshire, and it really shows the impact of mental health across the lifespan. It shows that children who have depression are more likely to drop out of school, have involvement with the justice system, and a variety of other negative outcomes. And it helps demonstrate the importance of supporting that social and emotional needs early on in the lifespan, because we're ultimately supporting the children we have now and their development into happy and successful adults. So as you see up on the PowerPoint here, we have created a visual that outlines what we do similarly and what we do differently as professionals in a school. So why we have the Mental Health Team is because we collaborate so much together, and we really discuss many of the issues that go on with mental health in our school communities. It is important that we work as a team to collaborate and communicate to support our families and our students. All three positions have many similarities, as you can see in the white part in the middle with the waves. So some of those things, since it is pretty small writing, is that we address student and family unmet needs, collaborate with teaching staff, parents, and community and their partners, provide crisis interventions for students and families and the staff. We support staff well-being. And short-term intervention via two and three consults. And as you can see, there's also many differences we have as well. So we outline those in some of the other bubbles, as you can see what we do jointly. So here we have some of the other ways that we address student mental health needs. So we have a great relationship with Seacoast Mental Health Center, and we're able to offer supports for not only students, but also for parents. We collaborate with SAU21 to offer the See Something, Say Something. This is a tip line, and it can be found on all of the school and SAU website. Our Mental Health Team has worked with the State's Department of Health and Human Services. We've reviewed and updated our district protocols. State law requires that all schools develop suicide prevention policies and provide education to all students and staff. So this team worked together. We reviewed and updated our district suicide prevention protocols and student education. Our student education specifically grades five through eight, and all of our staff education is done in collaboration with Connor's Climb. Teachers and counselors work together with assessments that are used to help make decisions about how to best meet the social and emotional and behavioral needs for our students and promote student wellness and improve engagement in learning. We have Mrs. Antico and Mike Anderson, who are both working with the district in the areas of social-emotional learning, as well as Mrs. Antico is working with us on responsive classroom. Our district uses a district-wide program called Zones of Regulation, which is a self-regulation program. Center School has a targeted social skills program called Teach Town that we use. And the district staff is working with New Hampshire Listens, which is out of the University of New Hampshire, and we are focusing on educational equity in our classrooms.
For those in crisis, New Hampshire has the Rapid Response Access Point 988, which started this past January. Anyone can call this number at any time, 24/7, and help can be provided over the phone or in person. You can also view their website, newhampshire988.com, and it is also on the SAU90 School Counseling
Before we close, we wanted to inform you about additional resources and information available on our school counseling website. We have a lot of resources for parents and a virtual calming room for students where they can listen to relaxing music, take a yoga class, or learn about mindfulness. You should definitely take a look at our website. So we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the board?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I wanted to wish you all a happy National School Counselor Week. And again, shout out to Angela Bowen, Amanda Tamborelli, Samantha Connell, Michaela Kylie, Stacy Picard, Emily Whitney, Les Masterman, Mrs. Fixler, and I'm sure, Mrs. Antico, and I'm sure I've probably forgotten someone, but happy National School Counselors Week to you.
I just have a comment on the 988 number, and I think it's great that it's on the counselor's website. I'm wondering if we should put that rate, as anybody navigates to SAU90, bang, it's right there as well.
That's a great idea.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Okay. Well, thank you very much. And as I say to other invited guests, you can stay, or we won't be upset if you go.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
We'll move on to School Board Member Updates. Budget Committee. Ginny.
We finished our work, and now it's up to the voters. Second Tuesday of March, I think the polls open at 7:00, and they close at 8:00. So make sure you get out there to vote. If you can't be there, do an absentee ballot, which is available at the town clerk's office. You need to vote. Sitting home, at home, complaining about things isn't going to work. You need to go in. You've got to vote on the town budget, the school budget, and the winter kind of budget. So all of that's available. So get out, do some research, and vote.
And if I could add, if I could add to that, there are, you know, critical contracts out there, the paraprofessionals and the teachers' contract. The paraprofessionals are doing an outstanding job in promoting their contract, both on the social media and also locally. So I want to give them a thumbs up for that.
Okay. Wellness Committee. Andrea.
Well, we're encouraging all staff to make sure to complete their initial health assessment, which allows them to get $75 per quarter for healthy habits. I know Mary, thank you very much, she's putting fruit in the staff rooms on the first Wednesdays. Thanks to Kathy Tuck for doing wellness wish boxes filled with all sorts of treats. Center School, I guess they're looking at self-care as it relates to COVID-19. Hampton Academy, I guess, participated in a winter stroll at Strawberry Bank. Tried to get someone else to do that, but he wouldn't do it. Remember that Health Trust will cover the cost of COVID-19 testing. And the farmer's market is hopefully happening in August, and that will be the focus of the spring. Also, the YMCA is offering, oh, free January for staff members, and then reduced fees for membership there. So that's certainly something to look into as well. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. School Boards Association, believe it or not, I do have something. I do have something. So I'm going to pass these out. Mariah, can you?
Yep.
Is, you each have one?
Yep.
Yeah. So these are some webinars that are coming up. Wherever it says costs $30, that doesn't apply to us. We're free, okay? Because Mariah signed us up the right way. Thank you. And it has the dates for each of them at different times, but these are different ones that I thought the board might be interested in looking at. If you can, you can. I think there's one that I want to especially look at, and that's that last one, on digital communication, email, social media, if I can make that one. Okay. And that's all. Oh, and to sign up, you just go New Hampshire School Boards Association website, and you'll be able to sign up. Any questions? Okay. Scheduling, Frank?
I have nothing unless Dr. Costa has something to add to that.
I'm good.
And going to the second item on this is the...
Learning Collaborative?
Yeah. There's nothing there unless Dr. Costa has something.
No, we meet, it's a very small group. We meet every other month on Tuesday mornings with a small group of superintendents that have students that participate in the Seacoast Learning Collaborative. We, at this time, do not have any students that participate, but we have in the past, we may in the future. But basically, they are facing the same struggles we are facing in terms of staffing, transportation, et cetera. So just trying to be supportive of them and their needs, and great conversation. Sal Petralia, the Superintendent of Rye, Newcastle, and Newington, he is the Chair of that committee, but we are there just to be a sounding board and to support them.
Rec Department.
Yeah. So the Rec Department has three Warren Articles also that we're hoping to get support for, 17, 21, and 27. 17 is to make the part-time foreman in the parks a full-time position. Article 21 is for a new building at Tuck, and it will have zero tax impact because it's being paid out of unassigned fund balances and the rec infrastructure account. And finally, Article 27, which would take 20% that they get from the parking lot revenues to install new flooring in the Tuck Building, irrigate Tuck Field, and to paint new pickleball lines at the inline rink, which is very popular. So again, I would encourage everyone to please vote for Warren Articles 17, 21, and 27 for the Rec Department. Also, on February 18th, all parents of tweeners, that's the ages nine to 12. If you would like a night off, here's your chance. You can join Coach Beth and yoga instructor Kate, the students, not the parents, at the Tuck Building for an evening of fun. Starting at 6:30, there'll be crafts, there'll be a yoga class, mindfulness and breathing. They'll start off with a pizza party, plenty of Friay night snacks available. And the only thing the adults need to do is to make sure to come back at 10:15 and pick up your tweens. So it could be a great night out, and that's at the Tuck Building on February 18th. That's it.
Any questions for Andrea? Okay. Policies? Wendy?
Nope. Nothing this month. We're getting set to meet in a couple of weeks.
Professional Development, nothing?
No, we have a meeting coming up in March.
Okay.
Just the only thing is, is that we, because our plan does expire, I can let you know that we currently are doing a really in-depth overview of it to ensure that we're following state procedures. So we'll be ready to share that draft probably that Wednesday after our February winter break. Yep. And that will be virtually, so we're happy to help set up a link, or you're welcome to join me at the SAU if you'd like. Either way.
Wendy?
Yep, I got a list here. Let's see. Am I on? Yeah. Let's see. The February 28th is the Community Oven Membership Night. They're going to be doing fundraising, promoting memberships. So if you haven't bought your PTA membership yet for the year, you can get that there. They're also going to do a 50/50 raffle and some other fundraising things there. The Harlem Wizards, which they were thinking they might do that in the spring, that has been pushed out to fall of 2022. April 30th through May 6th, they are doing a casino week at The Brook, where they will get a percentage of proceeds from that, for their organization. And last but not least is Spirit Ware. So I think everybody knows that we ordered Spirit Ware back before Christmas. Everybody's hoping to get it for Christmas gifts, and because of the supply chain issues, they just so far have not been able to get it. They are working on it. They are, the guy they ordered it from has been keeping in touch with them. He's gotten pieces of it, but not enough to kind of put the whole order together. But it is coming. And that's it.
Any questions for Wendy? Okay. I know there's not much as far as negotiations, other than, as you said, we have negotiated two contracts that took us a long time this year, the paraprofessional contract and the teacher contract. And we're hoping people get out and vote to support both of those. In all of the discussions that we've had, going through the Budget Committee, going through the meeting last night that we had, which was the deliberative session, I've heard nothing but supportive comments. I haven't heard anything negative for either contract.
And if I can add to that, the first year, the contract calls for roughly a 5% increase, which for a teacher starting out today, the increase is roughly a gross amount of $46 a week. After taxes, depending on your tax structure, it could be anywhere from $35 to $36 for an increase for the week. And on the high side, we're looking at roughly $82 a week, but after taxes, you're down to about 70. So it's not much of an increase based on what's happened, and it does narrow the gap with our competitive surrounding SAUs, Exeter, SAU21, and Portsmouth. So I just wanted to add that comment.
Curriculum? Andrea, Wendy, anything?
Well, I met with Lois and the principal's reading specialists with Karen Matso and Tammy Hilton, yes, from Demonstrated Success, and we've started to review and renew the curriculum cycle, starting with Language Arts. We had the curriculum maps all done and had gone through a five-year, maybe, cycle, and it's now time to start renewing that cycle. So we're starting with Language Arts, and again, reviewing standards, lessons, and data, and making sure that it's, you know, scope, sequence, content, skills assessment, all of that is in line with, you know, what everybody's doing. That's it.
Master Plan? Frank, anything?
I have nothing to add to that right at the present time.
Okay.
Lucky for me. You've had a chance to take a look at my board report, as well as supplemental newsletter, and there is a permission to accept gifts. I think Dr. Costa will get to that a little later. Just a couple of highlights, what's going on at Center School. First of all, we're gearing up for the most important day of the entire school year tomorrow. Anybody know what that is?
Hundred days.
Hundred day of school. That's right. So there'll be some fun activities in place in all the classrooms to celebrate the hundredth day of school. We counted that remote day as one of the day, so this is our hundredth day. So only about 80 or so days left. Is that correct? Something around that. So we have some fun activities with number cents and things that are going on in the classrooms throughout the day, so that is great. Again, I want to, as Andrea said, it is School Counselors Week. I just wanted to give a personal shout-out to Center School's School Counselors and School Psychologists for all they do at Center School. January, February, as I said, hundredth day of the year, which is the middle of the school year, all about recalibrating, checking to make sure what we're doing is correct, doing some mid-year assessments. At Center School, we do beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end-of-the-year assessments. So this is the window for middle-of-the-year assessments. We're seeing some tremendous growth. I wanted you to be reassured of that, the teachers at Center School, as well as the parents at home, working tremendously to make sure that the students are getting the best opportunities. So any questions for me at Center School? Here we go. Frank?
I have, could you elaborate a little bit on the blankets for Hope?
Yeah.
For our home audience?
One of our teachers, Kelly Knowles, brought that to our attention. She's a grade-two teacher, and she's participating as well as someone else with her. So that's just an opportunity to get blankets into the hands of those that are needy. There's going to be a presentation that's going on. It's a great supplement. I helped out and purchased all the blankets ahead of time, and then they're going to be donating them out to the local charities. So it's a great organization. I'll give a little bit more feedback how it went. We're going to do that next week. I'll give a little bit more feedback at the March Board Report. Thank you. You're very welcome. It's part of our, we're doing a lot, as other schools as well. February is a great kindness challenge month, so we're doing a lot of activities around kindness, which is just fabulous. Ginny?
My most important time of the day, year, is kindergarten registration.
Correct.
What are we doing?
So we're right on par. We just put out together all of our kindergarten packets, and in March, packets will be available to, for parents to pick up. And so then, in May, we will have live in-person, with the weather outside, we're going to do them outside. We've got away with it with COVID a little bit, so we're excited to do some in-person registrations and some screenings of the kids in kindergarten. So that will take place on three days in May, with a late registration in June as well. So that's, all those plans are already in place to go. So we'll be sending out some information. We'll put it in the local news as well, and get it on the website, as well as the television, to let people know when they can start picking up to pick packets up for registration. And so never too early to start thinking about getting those five-year-olds into school. Honor before September 30th, five years old turn to kindergarten.
Any other questions for Mr. Lannan? Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Hello, Mr. Sadler.
Hello, how are you?
Good thanks.
Oh, great. So just a couple of things going on at Marston. Last month, we had our Spelling Bee. It was awesome. Mrs. Hinchcliffe emceed it. She sets up the whole thing. And we had students in our cafeteria with a couple of adults, and then the rest of the fifth-grade classes were watching live, along with parents and family members at home. So Wes Granger was our Spelling Bee champion, with Quentin Carroga as a runner-up. Unfortunately, as happens often, the next part of the Spelling Bee is part of our February vacation, so Wes won't be available, but Quentin will be going on. They've changed it up a little now. The, instead of going to Concord and going through vocabulary round and trying to get on stage, it's now an electronic, you know, it's an online assessment that you take. So we're just getting ready for that, and we're excited that Quentin will be there to represent us. And the interesting about the Spelling Bee, we always remind the kids when they don't feel as successful, is that it's fifth through eighth graders. So it's a reminder for our students that we're going against students who are a lot older and a lot more advanced than them, but even to make it to that round, or even the final 14, is a big accomplishment. So I think we're going to be honoring some of those kids next month. Otherwise, we completed NAPES on February 1st. Mrs. Hoppe organized that with the state. It's the National Assessment of Educational Progress or Performance, the Nation's Report Card. So while we don't get individual scores about our students or school, it's nice to know how New Hampshire ranks comparatively with the rest of the country in terms of academics in math and language arts. So we're excited to see that. And then, just a plug out there, that we're having our penny drive right now, as we do most times in February, as Mr. Lannan said, you know, thinking about kindness and giving back. So it's kind of funny, someone in third grade, they thought it was literally a penny drive, and they weren't allowed to bring in dimes and nickels and quarters. So just out there for all the parents, you can bring in any denomination of coin, that's fine. And we've always donated to local charitable organizations, and we'll continue that. The money we collect will stay right here in Hampton and help some of our own families out, which is always a good thing. So send your change into Marston if you have any. Otherwise, that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Sadler?
Excellent. Take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Costa?
Yep. Before bridge begins, I do want to share something with the community.
Before Bridget begins, I do want to share something with the community. There was a letter that went out yesterday to parents and, at Hampton Academy. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to share a letter that did go out to the community, just to share it with our viewers at home. And I will be sure to follow up on my Friday newsletter as I do. So before Bridget begins, um, this is a letter that Mr. O'Connor, Principal O'Connor, did write to the families of Hampton Academy. But I really think it's important that people are aware of what is going on at Hampton Academy. So I'd like to share with you at this time. This letter was dated February 7th, 2022. It did go out last night at 5:00 in the evening. And it reads, "Dear SAU 90 staff, parents, and guardians, I've decided that I need to spend some time focused on my health. Given my history, rest assured, it is not cancer. At my request, the superintendent has granted me a medical leave of absence. As you all know, Mrs. Hughes and I have worked together as a capable team, and I have great confidence that she and the entire staff will continue to provide leadership and educational opportunities while I am away. In the interim, in addition to Mrs. Hughes, Superintendent Dr. Costa and Principal Lannan will be providing administrative support to the school. Please direct any email inquiries to Assistant Principal Bridget Hughes at B Hughes, that spelled B-H-U-G-H-E-S, at sau90.org. For 24 years, this community has trusted my judgment as a leader to do what is best for our students and staff. Serving as principal continues to be one of my great joys of my life. To perform at a high level, I need to take care of my own physical and mental well-being. I look forward to returning stronger than ever and appreciate the support this community has shown me. Respectfully, Principal David O'Connor." I just thought it was important, um, for our community to be aware. And I, I kindly ask that you, um, respect, obviously, Mr. O'Connor's privacy at this time and that if you have any specific questions, obviously, you know that you can reach out to Mrs. Hughes, but you're always welcome to reach out to me at, um, elcosta@saun90.org or by calling the SAU at 926-4560, extension 304. I want to assure you that we are most concerned with ensuring that our Hampton Academy students and staff continue to get the education and support and services that they are so deserving of. And I can tell you that the staff and everyone has really stepped up to the plate. And I am here, um, right now to provide the oversight, support, and assistance. And when I'm not here, I know Principal Lannan was here this morning and had the pleasure of helping out in the cafeteria and just enjoying his former students, as I do as well. We know that, um, this is an interim plan. And as soon as I'm ready to share more information, you'll be notified. But please know that we recognize, um, this time is being unsettling in some ways. But I want to assure you that everyone is doing his or her part to ensure the smooth and orderly operation of Hampton Academy. So just wanted to let people know that, um, we're all doing our part and things are going as smoothly as can be. So with that, we're gonna ask Mrs. Hughes to follow up on the report for Hampton Academy.
Hi.
Thank you, Dr. Costa.
Bridget, you might want to drop that mic down.
I know, I am kind of short, huh? Sorry about that. Thank you. Um, and, you know, we all miss Principal O'Connor, but he needs to know that his rock to, his rock star staff has really stepped up to the plate. I knew they would and, uh, I just have amazing things to say about them and to thank them and Dr. Costa and Mr. Lannan and the whole leadership team and the board for all of your support. So thank you. We had an amazing remote learning day, uh, on Friday. Probably the best attendance we've had in a long time. The kids were amazing, the staff was great, and it was a really good day. Um, special thanks to our custodial staff, who did an amazing job of cleaning out the school after that storm on Friday. Uh, nobody slipped and fell on the way to school yesterday, so it was great. So thank you to them. Kudos to our counselors and National Counselor Week. Amanda and Angela and Emily and Dr. Les couldn't do what we do without them. We also had our spelling bee and our top three finalists were A.J. Hummels, first place, Megan Nato, and then Annabelle Lord. And this Thursday, we have our geography bee, so we're looking forward to that. The last ski club outing to Pat's Peak is this Friday. So I know that's disappointing to the kids, but they've all had a wonderful time. And February 17th, if you happen to catch New Hampshire Chronicle, you might see two familiar faces. Myself and Emily Fixler are going to be on it. And, uh, we will sign autographs later, if you want. Uh, we, uh, they interviewed us about sneaker donations that we give in to our kids at Christmas time. So look for that on February 17th. Our Warm Spirit Days are happening, um, right before February Vacation. That's always a good time. The kids look forward to that, the staff looks forward to it, it's fun. Our next SEL Day with Mike Anderson, sorry, is February 23rd. And we just eked out our schedule for that today. Paris, the eighth grade staff, and a few individuals who have already met with him want to meet with him again, so that's a great day. And curriculum happenings, the eighth grade has already started their oratoricals and they're deep into those. And those are always a big hit at the end of the year. It's a lot of work for the kids, but the subject matter they talk about is amazing. Seventh grade kids are doing a cultural tour and comparing their education in the States to education in other lands. The sixth graders have made these really cool cereal boxes based on Egypt, ancient Egypt. Really fun facts there. The ELP program's been getting out into the community. The kids have gone shopping, they've gone, uh, snowshoeing. And the Integrated Arts, there's so much stuff happening there, it's amazing. So that is what's going on at Hampton Academy. And thank you again to everybody for your support. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from Mrs. Hughes?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, Mrs. Levine? Oh, there you are.
Hello. We've been very busy this month in the tech department. Um, we received all of our Promethean boards for Marston School. Um, we're very excited about that. So those will be installed over February Vacation. So we have a team that'll be installing those for all of the classrooms at Marston. Um, we also got Chrome boxes, which add another device to the Promethean boards here. It's an update for Hampton Academy. Um, we're still waiting on Center Schools, but we're hopeful that they'll come in shortly. Um, we also got where we're going to be installing equipment for the auditorium. Um, we are very excited about that because we know that the sound in the gym is an issue. Um, so we got the equipment, it's gonna be installed. We have new cameras, microphones, um, all the audio equipment. And, um, we can broadcast from the auditorium. So that's a nice upgrade and that was through the franchise fees that we've gained. And we are working with the town on finalizing our franchise agreement, um, with them. And that's about it.
Any questions for Mrs. Levine? Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Lasade? If I could, just preempt you, no, come up, but if I could preempt you a little bit. I know that you and Mrs. Shepherd were working on some naming areas. Do you two want to talk about that and update the board?
Um, sure. Um, Andrea and I walked around Hampton Academy and we talked about different types of placards. Um, and she actually got a chance to look very closely at the original dedication plaque. And I think after her reflecting upon it in our conversation, I think we concluded that's probably not what we want to, um, have in the other locations. Um, we talked about, um, having raised letters over the doors, the main entrances to these spaces, that would, um, have the simple name of the areas. Um, make sure I have these right. Um, that the, um, maybe you can help me out here?
It was the, um, trustee's library, the alumni auditorium, and the memorial, um, gymnasium.
Yep.
Were the three main ones.
Right.
Talked a little bit about maybe something with the foyer, but we're not too sure on that.
Right.
But those were the three main ones.
So when I, when I talk with this, um, with, um, Mr. O'Connor, we currently have the memorial stuff already up in the auditorium. And I don't know if we want to switch the names or not. It might be something you want to talk about because we have the, the placard from going back to, you know, World War I and World War II and Korean vets that have lost. That plaque is up there now. Um, but that's something for the board to decide. Um, so we'll probably have to choose a font if this is what people would want because it just, it wouldn't be a placard. It would just be, um, like over the ticket booth, over the double entrance into the gymnasium, and over the, uh, display case at the, um, looking into our, uh, library, media center, library.
So if anyone on the board is, or if you are not opposed, I think we should make a decision to go ahead with the, uh, to change that, uh, lettering. So it would be the, um, alumni gymnasium and the memorial auditorium. And then, of course, we're gonna have to add to the names, um, on the memorial plaque.
Yes.
But you and I talked about that, so.
Right.
And as far as the, um, font?
Well, we should, we'll, we'll have to choose some fonts and see which ones are available and whether we go with a, it's like picking out door pulls for your kitchen. Are we going with chrome? Are we going with brass? Are we going with brush metal? Are we going with black? You know, so there's a lot of different choices. So we'll prepare that for next meeting and apprising.
Right, so... So we're not voting on anything tonight. We're gonna, you, you guys are gonna put something a little bit more solid together for us to look at and vote on either the next board meeting or the following one or?
Mm-hmm. Um, but we should know which rooms we're getting letters for, for, just to know. I don't know if... Consonants cost more than vowels or not.
Yeah, just put it out there. Is anyone opposed to having the trustee's library, the alumni gymnasium, and the memorial auditorium?
What is the memorial auditorium?
That's, that's for those that have lost their life in Hampton Academy, um, alumni who have lost their lives in service to our country. And there's already a plaque there with the World War II people on it.
Right.
Um, but we would need to update it with, um, anything that, that has happened since then.
Like Desiree Loy was one.
Right, and John Corrigan.
And I don't know if Patty Rohrborn would be one.
So you'd be talking to the Legion.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely get that information.
Mrs. Carter has already sent me a list of all of them that she worked with the Legion people to get. So that's ready to go. We just have to settle on the, like he said, the font and the type of lettering that you want. And Keith and I can bring that to you at the next meeting, so you can choose which font you want for the lettering over those areas.
I, I guess my only thought, and I don't want to throw a monkey wrench into this, but, um, we had a gym where the auditorium is that was the Eastman Gym.
Mm-hmm.
And I know the gym is, has now moved to a different location. Um, is that just gonna go by the wayside? I only say that because he was my...
No, I, I, I don't think anybody that's been, uh, of service to the academy community should be forgotten about, especially after a certain amount of service. And maybe what we need to do is develop a way of honoring all of them. You know, Ms. Wickham has her granite post out there. We have, um, Mrs. Markcott's tree out back. But there certainly have been quite a few, um, instructors in these buildings that certainly deserve honorable mention. And I don't know if it's after a certain amount of time. I mean, once you start naming things after people, it becomes very tricky because how come that person and not that person and?
Well, I only bring it up because it was done.
I know. I, we don't even know what that plaque is, to be perfectly honest with you.
I thought we kept that one.
The casas sign is...
We have that up.
That is up. That is actually up.
The Eastman sign is missing. And even when the Eastmans came here to look for it, they couldn't find it. And that's been a while.
The Woodburn sign is up for the field, right?
Yeah, we have four of them.
Okay.
Well, why don't you continue to try to put something together and at some point, um, but did you need some direction from the board tonight?
I just need to know if anyone is opposed to putting the lettering, like changing those two things, the alumni gym and the memorial auditorium.
And they would be raised letters like at, um, Marston School in the building? You know, so they're substantial and respectful?
I guess I just want to warn as less that I think, once you start naming people, then you end up with somebody's gonna get hurt. It's inevitable. So you just gotta be careful because somebody will get hurt if you go in and naming people.
I, I'm not opposed. You, you folks have been doing the legwork, so I, I have confidence in what you do.
Can I, um, make a suggestion? Can we have a special meeting down the road where you can present this stuff so we can actually physically see what we're talking about? Because I'm having difficulties visualizing it. Secondly, I thought we made some decisions on the gym by keeping the Eastman Gym. But if I'm mistaken, then I'm mistaken, you know?
Yeah.
That was, that was the thought about like the Eastman Gym, kind of keeping that, that going.
Well, that's why I think maybe we should...
But as Keith and I walked around and as we talked more, anytime you have, what did you call it? Well, late, uh, out in the court yet, he was referring to legacy art. And it's the same sort of thing. Once you put a name, like a particular person's name from the community somewhere, then somebody else's, you know?
Would get upset.
Right, like we were talking about, oh, I know, the community room. And, and keeping it the community room. Because once you put someone's name there that has donated money, whi- which is awesome. I mean, we don't want to negate that, but we'd like to have just the community room. And then you can have a list of donors, um, attached later, as opposed to making it just after one particular person.
Well, I, I get your suggestion. I'm not sure we need to have a special meeting for that, but do what you can and bring forward what you've done to the next meeting. If it looks like something we're ready to vote on or approve, we, we will. If, if we're not ready then, that's okay. Um, we're not under the gun particularly to do this, but, um, we don't want to forget to do it either.
Right. So appreciate all your efforts. I understand where Frank is coming from and everybody else, but you brought it up. Well, I guess other people did too, but just to your point. Um, you know, where it has been dedicated is an Eastman Gym that has been removed from the facility. Um, there's no reason why we can't honor that, uh, that coach and PE instructor. They probably called it gym back then. Um, can't be honored on some sort of placard with, um, a lot of the long-term coaches we've, we've had. But that's, that's up to the general, you folks.
Well, we're, we're starting, which I think is important.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, that's why I suggested we have a special meeting because if we're gonna take an hour to discuss it, it's an hour into our program.
I don't think when they bring it forward and we can see it in front of us, it's gonna...
The next thing we bring forward will be the types of lettering. And then you can decide on the type of lettering. After that, we can go to something else.
Sorry, I interrupted your report.
Oh, I, I was really just gonna rise to thank my staff for the hard work they've done on weekends recently. Um, and that they were thrilled to see that, um, one of their celebrity board members had driven by. I don't know if, they just saw us out and stopped by and cheered us on. And, um, the crew was very, um, happy that you recognized them when they stopped by.
They were, they were working so hard. I offered to bring them coffee, but they said no.
Did you bring them coffee?
I offered to, but they said, no, no, we're almost done. I was like, okay.
Uh, she starts with asking Kevin. And you know Kevin is, he doesn't ever want anything, you know?
He's my bud.
But yeah. Um, we're very lucky, we have a great crew. And, um, I appreciate their support and what they do for our community. Um, we are probably gonna lose at least one to retirement this year. Um, maybe two. We are probably going to lose at least one to retirement this year, maybe two as they're getting tired as well from the whole COVID thing. I'm just throwing that out there. It'll be a sad day. Their shoes will never be filled, but there'll be new names and new shoes. Other than that, we did have some roof leaks. And we'll, I don't want to make your program any longer tonight, but we will be looking at replacing the roof at Marston Schools, 1996 edition, and the roof at Center School. Marston is 96, Center School is 99. So that puts them close to what, 25 years old and plus? So it'll take us a while probably to save up enough money to do that project. We do it through the warrant, you know, our $300,000. But I'm just throwing that out there as this ice storm was, shows, you know, some things, parts are failing as they age and the crows tap on the roof and drop stuff and?
And that's another reason why we're hoping people support that warrant article that we put in there for $300,000.
Yes. This one's more important this year to make sure that we can ensure there are matching funds so we can get the proper ventilation improvements done for indoor air quality at Center School. And that will help us remove the, the air scrubbers in there that are very loud fans in the classrooms, which makes it challenging for kids to pay attention. That project will not be constructed this summer. It'll be the following summer because we cannot get schedule with contractors right now for the summer. Because we didn't have the money really to go to the, go to the streets to tie in. We will be doing the elevator at Center School this summer. And some miscellaneous projects around. And I will entertain, entertain any questions or any messages you want me to share with anybody.
Any questions?
Well, just an observation basically, but with, if the warrant article passes for Center School, that's going to greatly improve the air quality of that building, you know, especially during a pandemic year, correct?
Correct. And I think, you know, a lot of people are talking about these masks helping with flu and everything. But when we treat this air, we're eliminating a lot of mold spores, other allergies, and, you know, but definitely for the, any type of pandemic if we have, I hope this one goes away soon. But, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Mary, anything? No? Okay.
How are those applications coming in, Mary? Do you still need a plug?
Our percentage of free and reduced kids are about 15. So we're a little bit higher than September. And I actually just received six applications this week, last week. So we're still getting them in slowly, but we are up a percentage or so.
And no word if free lunches are going to continue?
No. Though, not, not yet. It would be nice, but we don't know yet. And Mariah and I were discussing summer feeding, but it's a little too early to make any decisions on that.
Yeah, I have a comment on that one.
Yeah, so, that's it. That's.
Thank you, Mary. Dr. Costa?
We have some, some donations. Do you want to do them all at once? How do you?
Let's do them all at once.
Okay. We have, at Center School, we have $45.20 from Box Tops for Education. And at Marston School, we have $1,277.29 from Life Touch. And also for Marston School, we have $51 for Box Tops. Principals, did I get them all? Yep.
Uh, someone want to move?
I'll make a motion to accept those donations.
Moved Frank, seconded Wendy. All those in favor?
All right. Just, I want to just briefly go through a couple of things on my report. But before I do, one of our goals is always around communication and opening dialogue with our stakeholders in support of our students. And I would be remiss if I did not bring up two very important, three very important warrant articles. They're all very important. All of the school's warrant articles are very important. But I do want to speak specifically to our teacher contracts and to our support staff contracts, CE and CESP. But I just want to say that the purpose for the contracts is twofold. One, it's really aiming to close the gaps, as you said, Mr. DeLuca, with all of our surrounding districts. That includes SU21, Exeter, and Portsmouth. So I also want to remind everyone that in addition to trying to close the gaps, doesn't exactly close the gaps, but at least it gets us closer, the teachers are also giving up some of their insurance. So there is some payback with insurance. So I just wanted to highlight that as well. And I do hope that people will get out and to please vote and to remember to support our schools. And I just had to say that, given all that our teachers and our support staff, obviously, our buildings as, as we are needing to replace roofs, all of these are all very important. But I just did want to highlight the CE and CESP contracts. So thank you for also bringing it up, Mr. DeLuca. So with that said, just a couple of other things is that we are, obviously, a big focus of the last couple of months has been on preparations for deliberative sessions and preparing for our town elections. In addition to that, we also have put together our annual report that should be available for the public very shortly, which highlights our programs and includes all of our schools. So that will be available for everyone to review. So I wanted to make that, everyone aware of that. Want to let you know that we are partnering with SU21 and that Mr. DeLuca and I and Mrs. Raga had the opportunity to talk with school board members from SU21 as well as legislators regarding a number of bills that are currently in Concord. I just want to let you know that there are about 179 bills that are on the floor in Concord as we speak. It is not a time to be complacent. It is a time, it's a call for action, and it's time to get involved because those things do impact potentially how schools are funding. It also, it also impacts governance. So please be mindful of what's happening in Concord. And I know I really appreciated the opportunity to spend some time with my colleagues at SU21, but also to have that evening to meet with our legislators, representatives, senators, to talk about these very important issues that our districts are facing. And I thought it was a very productive evening. I'm sure you did as well. So just wanted to highlight that. Moving on, just that, obviously, we are very mindful of the snow and ice. And I know that Mr. Lassard and his custodial staff has been working overtime given the amount of weather we're having in these months. I know this weekend, Ms. Lassard and I were in contact quite a bit, very concerned about how difficult it was to treat some of the surfaces. So we just want to remind everyone to make sure they're wearing proper pediatric attire as I am often reminded, and I want to send that out to everyone else, that the parking lots, as much as we try, the walkways, as much as we try, it, it can be very challenging. It is a lot of surface to cover. And obviously, want to thank the town for helping us out with all of that. So want to make sure I say that. Again, congratulations to Wes Granger and A.J. Holmzik on winning the spelling bee. I had the opportunity to attend both of those spelling bees. It was a, those were great afternoons and certainly was a lot of fun. And I'm excited to see how our students will fare when they get to the regional bee. We'll hear more about that after February 26th, when that takes place. And thank you, Mrs. Shepherd, for being part of our work with demonstrated success. It has been, believe it or not, 10 years since we looked at language arts. So we are due and I'm excited about this work. That will be probably a multi-year, but we'll be looking specifically at the curriculum this year and then really looking at how we teach to these standards and specifically looking at methods and materials and assessments. So we're hoping that we can do that within the next couple of years and then, of course, continuing on with our work around that. I'm looking on. I guess I would say, the, the other thing I guess I'd like to mention is that we know that COVID protocols have changed. I do have Mrs. Connolly and Mrs. Pietrus here tonight. There's our school nurse who do phenomenal job addressing and responding to COVID in our schools. We know that CDC and DHHS has now reduced isolation and quarantine times from 10 days to five days, which have changed our protocols to be in line with that. This assumes that our, any infected student or staff member is fever-free for 24 hours and their symptoms are improving and that they are able to wear a mask for an additional five days. I want to say that it's really, it's really interesting to watch these numbers. I know that when we got back in January, they were extremely high. And now, as, as we're looking at those numbers, they continue to go down every week. In fact, I am mindful of the plan that we put forward in the fall and the one that specifically talks about when we might be able to relook at guidelines. And as it is right now, we have our rate at the, we follow, we follow two rates. We follow Rockingham County, but we also follow Seacoast. And we can see they are currently hovering around 14%, 16%. Coming down from 28%, 26%. So I'm very hopeful that we are going to get into the yellow zone. And once we are in the yellow zone, our masks would be recommended. That would be anywhere under 10%. It'd have to be 9.99%. And then, of course, at 5% there are optional. So my point being that we're moving in the right direction. We're not there yet, but we are, we're going in a really nice direction. I do, I'm thinking that we will follow a similar pattern as we did last year. So with that being said, I'm hopeful that if the numbers continue to go down, that we should, we should see some reductions in some of those layers that we have in place. So that's really exciting to see, even in terms of cases in Hampton as well as cases in our school. So today, for this first time in a long time, there were only cases at one school. So it was, you can just see that this variant seems to be really dwindling. It's still, we're still mindful of that, but I can see that we are moving in a great path. And we are ever mindful and watching those numbers and recognizing the need to make changes as we continue to see that. And I didn't know, I did have, like I said, Mrs. Connolly and Mrs. Pietrus come tonight. If there was something that you felt it was important to either to add or questions you have of them, but I do think, I did put COVID-19. It's always a standing agenda item on, on our agendas because I know this is an area that we have been somewhat consumed with. So I didn't know if there were something you'd like to add. Questions that you have?
I, I just would like to say that we appreciate everything that you've done over the past few years. Any questions for the nurses or for Dr. Costa?
I have a, a question. Basically, the latest information that is readily available right now is that many states are moving to a no mask or optional mask protocol by late March as the weather warms up to basically give everyone a break as the numbers continually climb down. Is that something that we're looking at as well?
Well, I think it, we came up with a plan that is actually on, it's on file with the state of New Hampshire. And what we're saying is, and this is very similar to what most schools in the, the state are doing, it's fairly similar. I won't say all of them, but I know the Southeasters superintendents were working collaboratively on this in that we said if, if we drop below 10% or we are, our positivity rate is under 99, we would go to optional, recommended and then optional. I, I do see us moving in that direction. We're at 16 and 14 in a month. So I do see that as a real possibility. If you wanted to change the, the plan and the protocol, that would be something that we would have to talk about. And again, we would just have to put it on file with the state. Again, I, I would lean in to our, our first responders, our school nursing staff. I don't know if you want to weigh in on, on Mr. DeLuca's comment?
Hi there. I'm Amy. I'm at Center School. Yeah, just as, as Dr. Costa said, we are seeing the trends go in the right direction. But it's, we are, we're not there quite yet. So essentially, as far as masking goes, what we look at and we get our reference from is, are some big organizations. So the American Academy of Pediatrics continues to advise that all students over the age of two years old and school staff should wear a well-fitting mask unless they have some reason that they cannot, like a medical condition or such, regardless of the vaccination status. CDC also continues to recommend that vaccinated people should wear masks indoor public places if they're in an area with substantial or high transmission, which we still are. You can see, if you go onto the NHDHS website, there's maps and like interactive, you know, all that mapping with our numbers that get updated regularly. So you can see, you know, New Hampshire is still all red. And we used to get kind of a little bit nervous when the majority of New Hampshire was red. So we have to recognize where things are getting better. We're not there yet. And so pulling back too much could just prolong this already very lengthened time that I don't think any of us imagined we would still be here at this point. But it's, seems to be that it's heading in that direction. So we're kind of just, kind of like holding on, you know? Do what we can to keep on that path. I also receive updates from Exeter Hospital leadership, and they also are really just, really asking the community to stay the course. Essentially, positivity rates are dropping, but they're still three times higher than the level of pandemic that shows pandemic control in a community. So we aren't there yet. They're encouraging schools, businesses, really just to continue to wear masks indoors and you can, if you can't, you know, socially distance. The schools have been a controlled setting and we've seen that it works. You know, as Dr. Costa was talking about, community rates were high. School rates were high. But what we continued to see was that our mitigation strategies, including masking, really helped. The, the major transmission was really not happening in schools. So though our numbers were high, we really feel that everything that we had in place was protecting our staff and our students. And I, we just want to continue on that path until it's the safest time to, to pull back where we can.
Just to, to add to that, and Frank, in your question, we really, we can't put a timeframe on it, like a month. I'm, I'm seeing a lot on the media with Connecticut schools giving a specific date where they're going to be no longer requiring the mask. We have to kind of just see what the numbers do and follow the trends and make sure we're out of the red before we cross that bridge. And also, with the new guidelines being changed, we've had the opportunity not only to update that and work as a team during the remote learning day, the nurses had a fair amount of time to, to really work on this and figure out a plan with, now that we're lighting up, lightening up on some of the guidelines, let's try to keep everybody safe. And when the children are coming back after five days of being in isolation, if they have COVID, we've been having them check in and working to educate them and making sure that they do have a well-fitted mask and they're able to tolerate that. Kind of comparing it to, well, do they have a medical condition that might, you know, not allow them to have this well-fitted mask for the additional five days? Educating them on times that they're going to be eating and drinking and having to remove their mask and letting them know this is what six feet looks like and we, we have to be mindful to that. So I think with all of the?
So I think with all of these measures that we have in place that we can be hopeful to hopefully see, you know, the lifting of the mask. But we really can't give a time, you know, give a date or a specific time on that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Dr. Costa?
No, just thank you very much, Mrs. Pietrus and Mrs. Connolly. I really appreciate that. The only thing that I added into my report was an overview of where we are with our goals that I put there for you. And just so you can see that we're, we're moving along in terms of looking at communication, safety, curriculum as it relates to language arts, obviously thinking about diversity and equity, and then, of course, responding and adapting to a COVID-19 environment. So I've included that in my report for you as well. And that's what I have. Just looking forward to sharing our annual report with you all very shortly. Questions?
Yeah, I have one more item to, to bring up. Just can you do some clarification as we discussed at the legislators' meeting regarding teachers and the lack of manpower that is dwindling? Because teachers are leaving the profession. Can you elaborate on that a little bit? Especially on the New Hampshire, University of New Hampshire graduating class?
Yep. Yep. So one of the things that we talked about was that we are, we are facing unfortunately, an educator shortage. In fact, this is not unique to New Hampshire. This is a nationwide problem right now in that fewer and fewer students are going into this field for many reasons, right? We see in many of the helping industries, you see a lot of help-wanted ads. I mean, we drive up and down Route 1 Lafayette Road and you can see. But education is also one of those service industries, and fewer and fewer people are going into them. One of the things that was brought to my attention, as somebody that is, as you know, I do some adjunct work at the university, is that in the past, we would have, UNH would have easily over 100 graduates of their year-long internship for their education department. So they, those students that were enrolled in an MED, they'd have over 100 students graduating. This year, they have about 29 students graduating. So you can see that this is a problem. In fact, before even COVID began, there was a commission out of Concord led by Mary Heath. Mary Heath was the former deputy commissioner under Lionel Tracy when he was the commissioner. She led a commission to study teacher preparedness in the state. In fact, all of the universities were, had a seat at the table. I got to serve on that commission. And we all talked about the fact that Keene State used to be the largest school in the state as part of UNH that would prepare educators. And you had Keene talking about how few people were going in. And this was back, by the way, in, believe it or not, 2019, pre-pandemic. So Keene spoke, Southern New Hampshire spoke, UNH spoke, Plymouth State spoke. All of the big ones were speaking about how they could not get students to participate in education programs. So it's going to really impact all of us. And one of the things that we talked about that evening at Winnicott High School was that we have to be really creative in terms of how do we encourage people to step into a noble field to become an educator? And how do we promote our profession? And this is something that I know that we all take very seriously, but it is something that I will continue to work on, something that I continue to promote, even with our students that are at Winnicott through the ELO program with Donna Kuchar. We, we try to partner with them and provide internships for high school students. But we're, we're looking at all kinds of creative kinds of things that we might be able to do. And I did reach out to Southern New Hampshire University as well as UNH about what kind of partnership programs might exist. And I know that Meredith Nadeau from SEU 21 would also be interested in looking at that as well. So it's, it's on our radar and we are concerned. So thank you for bringing that up. I don't know if you want to add anything, if I forgot anything. I know that Wendy, you were also there as well.
No, I just wanted that brought up because all districts are facing a hiring issue to fill positions from teachers that have retired. And we're competing now with the private sector, which pays more than it's an entry-level position in teaching with less headaches and, you know, better, better health programs and such. So we're competing with that, and it's difficult to compete with the private sector.
Well, especially now that the private sectors, like your summer programs, like Santa's Village, Water Country, Storyland, they're all offering $20 an hour to start. And also, if you think teaching is bad, try early childhood. There is a very big lack of teachers, staff. We cannot fit all the people, children in New Hampshire that need childcare and the parents who need to work. That is becoming a major crisis here in New Hampshire. So all of your helping fields. But you know what? We as individuals need to also appreciate those teachers that we do have, the staff that we have, the custodians that we have. Say something nice when you see them. If your child has problems, please don't make the teacher the first victim of, of your anger. Please think, please talk to them. Please treat everybody with the respect that you want to be treated with. And that might go a long way for people to say, hey, teaching isn't as bad as I thought. So why don't we try it?
That's a great point, Ginny. In fact, I think about the YMCA Schools Out program. We didn't have, unfortunately, the staffing to offer that at Marsden this year. It's a great, it's a great point. And also, you're absolutely right. How do we elevate the profession? That was talked about as well that evening at SEU 21 at Winnicott High School in that we, at one time, teachers were revered, right? I mean, if you look at, you know, at one time, it was a profession that it was noble. It was regarded, it was respected. And, you know, unfortunately, it's been, these have been challenging years. There's no doubt about it. But we're very lucky in Hampton. We're very fortunate. And you, and you know from my Facebook post, I get around to all the schools as often as I can, right? I take pictures, I go in, I see what they're doing. We are so lucky that we have such a committed, dedicated professional staff that rises to every challenge before them every single day. And I, I have to say, I'm inspired as I walk through these classrooms. It's, it's just, as you know, Andrea, we talk about this, and I know that others know that we are so fortunate to have this, this staff that we do. And they, along with the families and the children, make Hampton a place that people want to come to. Hampton is known for its great schools. And we work hard every day to, to live up to that. And so thanks for bringing that up. And Ginny, I couldn't agree with you more.
Okay. Mariah, finances?
Yes, I have some finances. Maybe I'm not on, it says I'm on. I'll just talk loud. There we go. So first off, I'm going to start with food service. We have not received revenues from the state yet for the past two months. But once that comes in and our numbers, we're looking right on track to break even. So food service is doing great. We received the seamless summer rates. And we are looking at summer programming. We're having that discussion right now, trying to decide if we're going to have summer programming and what, to what extent. So all kids eat free as of June, and the June ends as of right now. They have not approved it to go further, but so they gave us the seamless summer rates. We have to decide if it's worth providing the students with the food this summer. It may not be. They do leave prior to lunch. And if it's not free and we have to keep workers, the cost might be more than it's worth. But we can look at that once we figure out what we are going to do for summer programming. So that's in the works right now. I gave you Title I grant activities for you to look over. The annual report is at the printers. I spoke to them this afternoon. We should have it in under two weeks. Once I receive them, they'll be distributed to all schools, the library, and the town hall. We received a check from Health Trust for return of surplus for the fiscal year '21. It was $275,774.55. We have to give a percentage back to people that participated in the health insurance. So any employee and retiree. I got a report, I had to cut checks. That was completed. That was in the amount of $86,206. So we have technically about $189,566 of surplus left. My suggestion is between the retirees that we have coming up, some legal bills that were unexpected and extra long negotiations and a few other unexpected expenses. I would really like to wait until April to come up with some ideas. But my suggestion was to get some quotes and information on Center School Playground. We had been in talks about it. It needs some work, at least if not replacement, but a lot of repairs. So that was one of the thoughts that we, I was going to look into to bring to you. If you have any other thoughts you would like me to look into, I can bring in April so we can vote on that.
Right. I think the board will be talking about some issues too.
Yeah. So it, I kind of just like to hold off on that. And then, what else do I have? So there's that. And then really, other than that, please don't forget to vote. We've been talking about that all night. It's at Winnicott, and it is on March 9th, and the polls open at 7:00. And if there are any questions in regards to our budget, feel free to reach out to me. My email is on the website. I have all the budget information on the website. Phone call, you're welcome to call me. I'm willing to answer any questions. That is my report for this month.
Thank you. The, we have to look at the minutes of January 11th? One, two, three plus pages? Anyone want to move to accept those?
Make a motion to accept.
Move Frank second. Andrea? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you to Colleen for doing those for us. Thanks, Colleen. We appreciate it.
Okay, I would accept a motion at this time.
Just, just before we close, could I just make one comment? I just wanted to recognize the passing of one of our longtime teachers serving here, Mr. Arthur Bud Wheeler, who passed away recently. And he was a pretty huge member of the faculty, part-time administrator. And he will surely be missed. And he did a lot for especially the science department here at Hampton Academy.
And I think donations in his name can be made too?
Yes. Donations in his name could be made to the Hampton Academy Science Department, care of Sean Tierney.
I would make the motion that we go into non-public under 91, 91.
Dash eight three.
Dash eight three.
Eight three.
I'll second it.
Seconded. Roll call, vote.
Yes.
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 Aye.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.